And you can bring as many kids as you want to the tailgate and they get to run out on the field with the team this weekend. So please come out and celebrate. Thanks.
Thank you, District Two.
Thank you. So the Overton Pack Parrot Advisory Council will be meeting their for their first meeting of the school year, September 29th from six to seven fifteen. That'll be at Overton High School. And then my only other announcement is to remind everybody that it's National Hispanic Heritage Month through October fifteenth. And we are grateful to have all of our students inside of our schools and we hope to celebrate with them. Thank you.
Thank you, District Three. District Five.
I have one announcement. Governor's Early Literacy Foundation, G E L F, Jeff, in partnership with the Tennessee Department of Education, will celebrate Opportunities with Literacy Owl Fest at Robert Churchwell Museum Magnet Elementary on Thursday, September twenty-fifth, which is in District Five. So kudos to us for hosting the event. Um, over two hundred and fifty pre-K through fifth grade students will have the opportunities to select books to take home at no cost to families or schools. The event will um also provide photos and video opportunities and interviews with teachers, students, and from across the district. Um, just wanted to put that out there for my other board members. It's from eleven to twelve. I'll be there. Um, you all are free to join me.
Thank you, District Six.
Yes, just a couple of announcements. Um, tomorrow evening at six thirty, I will hold the District Six, the monthly District Six uh community meeting. This meeting will be held via Zoom and the registration link is posted on my social media. You will have to register in advance to attend this meeting. But it is absolutely a free meeting and I'd love to have constituents actually come. That's why I do it. And also, uh, the three seven oh one three bowl happens this Friday at Antioch High School. It is the Antioch High School Bears versus the Kane Ridge High School Ravens. And we will see who takes the three seven oh one three trophy this year. So that will happen at Antioch High School. I believe it starts at five thirty. Oh, and um, Antioch is going for its sixth win. They right now are currently five and oh, so we'll see what happens. I'm sorry, my apologies. It's at seven P M. Excuse me. But it will happen at Antioch High School, so hope to see you there.
Thank you, District Seven.
Um, yes, on October fourth, there would be uh Glen Cliff Elementary will be celebrating their seventieth anniversary um at the school on Saturday, October fourth from eleven A M till one P M.
Thank you, District Eight.
Um, welcome to all of the Hillsborough Cluster principals. I'm excited to have you all here. Excited to hear uh more about our I B cluster. And thank you all for the T-shirts, not just for me, but for everyone. First cluster to do that. Nice work. Um, and just so you know, this is announcements time, and so if you ever want me to say something, please feel free to send it to me. Thanks.
Thank you, District Nine.
Yes, um Lawson High School is hosting an underwear drive for their hero program and the Community Resource Room located at Lawson. The goal is to collect five hundred pairs of new underwear, so they're calling it the Undy five hundred. So bring those in. Let's get that underwear in. Um, and then also just wanted to say a big thank you to uh the P T Os at Bellevue Middle School, Westmead Elementary, and Harpeth Valley Elementary for hosting a really wonderful family movie night at Bellevue Middle School last Friday night. It was a lot of fun.
Thank you, Junior School Board Member. Do you have announcements? If you don't, it's okay. All right, and Senior School Board Member.
Okay, just one announcement. Um, this Friday, the twenty-sixth, Overton's having their homecoming tailgate and we're looking for volunteers. That'll be at five o'clock and it's open in the whole cluster. So even if you don't live in the Overton Cluster, I would highly encourage you to be there. It'll be a lot of fun.
Thank you. And then for District Four, I have a few announcements. Um, I want to take a moment and congratulate um two educators who just received their doctorate degrees. Um, they just defended. Uh, Dr. Anna Montanari, a teacher at Two Rivers Middle School, and uh officially Dr. Sharifa McDowell, Assistant Principal at Tulip Grove. We're really excited about all of their accomplishments and now they are officially doced. So if y'all see them or shoot them a message, congratulate them on defending their dis- successfully defending their dissertations. Uh, second thing is Coffee and Conversations. Um, I host a um monthly Coffee and Conversations. Um, it was originally scheduled for Wednesday, September twenty-fifth. It has now been moved to Thursday, September twenty, or it was on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth. Now it's on Thursday, the twenty-fifth from six to seven thirty at Caliber Coffee. Um, and then lastly, um, in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, I'd like to uplift our District Four Principal, uh Ms. Raquel Gonzalez, uh the Principal of Pennington Elementary, um in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. And I think we all have all of our announcements out. Thank you. We will adjourn this session.
Call this meeting to order. Um, we have a quorum of nine members and two student student school board members. So quorum has been established. Um, as you probably noticed, we have a new seating order. It's by district. So if you're wondering why the musical chairs is because we are now seated by our district. Um, all right, we will have pledge of allegiance and uh will the executor officer operations, Mr. Ken Stark, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Um, now we'll have the adoption of the agenda. Um, is there a motion for adoption of the agenda, Ms. O'Hara Block?
Uh, um, can I motion for the adoption of the agenda with item one B fourteen removed from the consent agenda?
Yes. There's been a motion to adopt the agenda with uh one B fourteen, system integrations to be removed from the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Nabat and Kenny. Um, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, any oppose? The adopt the um the agenda is adopted. We will now move on to awards and recognitions. Uh, we will move over to Dr. Battle.
All right, thank you Chair Player and good evening, board members. Um, we have some fantastic music educators and an outstanding elementary school to recognize tonight, so I'm gonna go ahead and jump right in. First up is Rose Bank Steen, um Magnet Elementary School, which was recently awarded the Cognia STEM Certification by Cognia, a nonprofit education organization that is known globally for its work to advance education. Rose Bank is just the second M N P S school to earn this certification. To be certified, a school must meet Cognia's Cognia's STEM performance standards or, for younger grades, the early learning STEM performance standards. These standards are research-based and they focus on how STEM learning is implemented, not just the fact that STEM is offered. To be certified by Cognia, a school needs to demonstrate a culture that supports STEM across several dimensions. First, inquiry-based, problem-based, experiential learning is central. Students engage in real-world problems, collaborate, explore, design, test, and more. The school also must show integration of STEM thinking across disciplines and grades, not just isolated STEM classes. And teachers must receive ongoing professional development in STEM pedagogy. Schools also must provide document documentation to show how they met each standard. Cognia-appointed review teams then conduct onsite visits to validate what has been provided. This includes classroom observations, interviews, and verifying artifacts to evaluate the school's STEM community, learning culture, experiences, and outcomes. This, as you've just heard described, is a big effort, one that a school does not undertake lightly. So tonight, um, we want to take an opportunity to recognize Principal Kelly Akers and the rest of Rose Bank's leadership team, along with faculty, support staff, and families who put in a lot of hard work into this process and into showing Cognia what a great school we have on Preston Drive in East Nashville. So I want to congratulate Principal Akers and her entire team on earning this certification. Rose Bank team, please join us up front so that we can celebrate you and take a great photo. And again, as they're coming, we just want to offer a huge congratulations to the entire team. Thank you for um just your tireless effort um to make sure all of your students and families and your educators have exactly what they need. We'd love to take a photo with you um to have, to celebrate. Thanks. All right, congratulations again to Rose Bank, uh Steen Magnet Elementary School. Thank you all for leading the way, um leading across the district, the state of Tennessee, and just being a shining light for this entire country um to um celebrate and uplift um as a model for our schools. Now, I'm excited to recognize four of our wonderful music educators who've received national recognition for the impact they're having in our classrooms every day. Each of these teachers was named a C M A Foundation Music Teacher of Excellence for twenty twenty-five, and there are four of just thirty from across the nation. Teachers, as I call your name, please come on up. Um, and I'm standing right here facing that direction so the audience can see you. We'd love to make sure we have everyone here at the end for a photo um because we want to capture this moment and to celebrate you. So first up, we have Chuck Brown from Head Magnet Middle School. Next up, we have Anna Maria Miller from Hume Fog Magnet High School. We're also celebrating David Petrelli from Lockland Elementary School. And last but not least, we're celebrating Allison Snyder from Hunter's Lane High School. I want you to check out these fabulous medals they have around their necks. So the C M A music it's a reel. The C M A Music Teachers of Excellence Program recognizes educators who demonstrate teaching excellence, creative positive learning, creating positive learning environments, and making a lasting impact in their communities. Each of these outstanding teachers received five thousand dollars to split evenly between personal use and their classroom or program. And they were celebrated at a red carpet gala two weeks ago at Skimmerhorn Symphony Center. And I also want to acknowledge and thank Michelle Kirk, who is here from the C M A Foundation. Uh, Michelle, can you send me acknowledge as well? Michelle, we'd love for you to join us up front. Um, for um the photo, we greatly appreciate our partnership um with the C M A Foundation, just doing all that you do to uplift and support our music educators. Um, again, teachers, we cannot thank you enough for your commitment to your students, um for your work ethic and the joy and passion um you bring to your classrooms and your music programs every day. Um, thank you for representing our school so well, both locally and nationally. We're super proud of you and staying ready to support you in any way that we can. Um, before we take our photo, also, we'd like to welcome up our Director of Vision Performing Arts, Mr. Franklin Willis, um to join us. Thanking him for his incredible leadership. And I'd ask board members, if you have one of these fabulous music teachers in your district, come on up um and join us. Join us for a photo. Yes, yes. And if there if there are any other um teammates, principals, team members here who have come to celebrate, we'd love to include you. All right, congratulations again to each of our C M A Music Teachers of Excellence. Um, also to Rose Bank. Uh, we appreciate the fine fashion and what you all lead. Um, with that, Chair Player, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Um, yes, I'm just really excited about the Cognia STEM Certification um process. I was a lead external reviewer and would go into schools to do that review process and just really excited about um uh Rose Bank being able to receive, being the second school to receive um that that certification. It's really exciting and it's a testament to all the hard work um that they do. Um, it's also a funny story. Um, about eight years ago, um Kelly Akers and Latasha Alfred were at Hermitage Elementary and I was the lead evaluator there, and then they transferred over to Rose Bank. Um, so it's so good to see their journey from one school to the another with the accreditation process. So thank you again and congratulations and grat- congratulations to all of the teachers uh who won the semi uh C M A Foundation Award.
Thank you. Um, yeah, it's awesome to have um teachers leading and it's being the Music City USA that we even show that we actually do it here in our schools too, and it's not in the private sector with the country mu- with the country music industry. Um, now we'll have directors report um with Academies of Nashville a strategic plan. And our core tenet, creating and supporting engaging rigorous and personalized learning experience for all students. And then we'll have M N P S reimagine update with the core tenants of creating and supporting and engaging rigorous and personalized learning experiences to all students and empowering leaders at all levels.
All right, thank you so much again, Chair Player and Board. Um, tonight we'll hear an important update on the future of our Academies of Nashville. For nearly two decades, the Academy's model has transformed our high schools, strengthened community partnerships, and given students a clear path towards college and career readiness. Now, as we look ahead to twenty thirty, we have the opportunity to build on that success and reimagine what comes next. Following that, we'll welcome up our Hillsborough Cluster leaders to showcase how they are leveraging the Academies of Nashville program and advanced academics to provide for a high-quality, guaranteed, personalized, and applied experience from elementary through graduation. Before that, I want to note that on, I have a whole slide deck. Can somebody pull the deck up for me? I was moving too fast. Thank you. All right, but before that, I want to note that um on the next slide, please, November first, twenty twenty-five, we will host the Every Student Known Summit at Hillsborough High School. This event will provide opportunities for students to be seen, known, and heard through student voice sessions and enrichment activities. At the same time, we will ensure every parent is known through dedicated parent and family engagement sessions. At this time, next slide, please, I'd like to invite our Chief of Strategy, Sarah Chan, to present the Academies of Nashville Strategic Plan and share how this vision will prepare our students for the workforce of the future. Followed by that, you'll hear from our Chief of Academics and Schools, um Chief Renita Perry, and then again, our fabulous leaders of the Hillsborough Cluster.
Good evening, Board. It's me again. Um, I'm here this evening to share with you an update on our Academies of Nashville Strategic Plan. Um, so uh as we're getting into our strategic plan, I want to start by just anchoring ourselves in the mission, vision, and core values of the Academies of Nashville. And as we were drafting this plan, which was really an extensive process that we began last winter and launched at Splash this summer uh with our principals, um one of the things that we got to do is really look back in the archives and learn a little bit more about the history of the Academies of Nashville and where a lot of this initial uh framing came from. So actually, the mission, vision, and core values, much of what you see up here dates back to the original founding of the Academies of Nashville. And it really is incredible, as we look at it now, how much it still is resonant today in terms of what we are trying to accomplish for our students. So the mission of the Academies of Nashville is to help our students build ownership and agency over their school experience and provide them with support to overcome obstacles while supporting them to strive for excellence. Our vision for how we do this is we prepare students for the workforce of the twenty-first century by giving them access to high-quality post-secondary learning and career opportunities. Excuse me, much of which I know we've begun to share with you all uh through much of the cluster design work you've been able to see as a team. Um, and then as we look at our core values, the first three up here do date back to the founding of the Academies of Nashville, plus a bonus one that I'm sure will be uh obvious to all of you why we've added it. Uh, but our first core values is relationships. The purpose of the Academies of Nashville is to build the strong connections with our students and uh between our students and faculty, relevance, ensuring that our students' education is applicable to their future careers, rigor, that all of our students get access to challenging curriculum opportunities and leadership opportunities, and readiness. This is the new one, guaranteeing that all of our students are ready graduates who are prepared for college and career. So I want to start here with that mission, vision, and core values because I think it really grounds us in what we are trying to accomplish through that high school experience, which at all of our zone high schools is offered through the Academies of Nashville. So as we sat down to build our Academies of Nashville Strategic Plan, we really challenged ourselves to have this bold vision for twenty thirty. Where do we believe the Academies of Nashville need to be in the next five years to make sure that we are staying true to that mission and vision and we're being truly driven by those core values as we approach the work? Um, so first of all, we know that nearly twenty years ago now, the initial design of the Academies of Nashville transformed the zone high school experience, and it ultimately became a national blueprint for that rigorous, relevant instruction. Uh, we know that people travel literally from all over the country and all over the world to see our academy model at work. I mean, to understand what are we doing in our high schools that makes our students' uh high school experience relevant and connected and bespoke to their needs as students. And yet, we also know that much has changed since we first launched the Academies of Nashville uh in those nearly twenty years since, both within our schools and of course, within all of the industries that we are trying to prepare our students for. And as those fields advance, both in terms of what we know about education, what we know our students need, um and our students' needs have evolved as well, as well as the industries we're preparing our students for, we know that our approach to the Academies of Nashville should continue to evolve as well to to ensure we are staying relevant and cutting edge in this work. So as M N P S continues to lead nationally in our academic outcomes and our graduation rates and our career-relevant education, we know that means that we as a district are uniquely suited to innovate and create that next-generation model for what an academy district would look like. So again, at the at the bottom, you see in our bold and blue, um, we believe in M N P S, not we believe, we did. M N P S pioneered the district academy model, and we believe that means we are uniquely well-suited to chart the course for the twenty thirty academy model as well. So I'm gonna start by giving you a sense of an overview of our five twenty thirty academy goals. We're gonna only go into detail of one of these goals because it's a big strategic plan. It's a big project. We have twelve zone high schools. Um, so I'm gonna give you a sense of what's in each of these goals, but we're gonna really do a deep dive into that excellence in advanced academics tonight. Um, and I suspect as we continue to go through the rest of our cluster updates, we'll be giving you more of a stronger sense of what is embedded in each of these as well for the strategic plan. So our first goal for the twenty thirty uh Academies of Nashville Strategic Plan is excellence in citywide access to high-quality pathways, making sure that we have been deliberate and intentional about which pathways are offered in each of our schools and what that means for our students' access. Second is excellence in embedded advanced academics, ensuring that regardless of which pathway our students are in or what they're participating in, they have sufficient access to advanced academics so that they could all graduate as Tennessee-ready graduates. Uh, third, excellence in advising in transitions, making sure that our strategy for a strong school counseling model is deeply embedded within the academy approach and that that is the bedrock of how we are guiding and advising our students through that academy experience. Four is around excellence in academy educator support, making sure that our academy educators, both our C T E teachers, but of course, all of those core instructors that make up the heart of the academy model have sufficient and excellent support so that they can effectively teach their content areas. And five, excellence in nationwide branding and messaging. Uh, we know that the history, part of the history of the Academies of Nashville, part of the power that continues to drive this model is the extent to which we've done an incredible job of branding and telling the story of what we've done through this model and making sure that we are remaining cutting edge in that space as well. So for tonight, we're gonna look specifically at this number-two goal for excellence in advanced academics. But before I continue on to our next slide, one thing that I do want to call out is you'll notice across all of this, we are really committed in the twenty thirty Academies of Nashville model to being clear that the academies are not a program. They're not a project that sits on top of the zone high school experience. Rather, they are the delivery mechanism for everything that we believe should be true about an outstanding high school experience. And embeddedness of advanced academics and advising and transitions, all of that work is just as important to a successful academy model as is that excellence in access to high-quality pathways. So we're gonna talk a little bit more detail specifically about uh that goal number two, excellence in embedded advanced academics. So in our vision, each one of the goals, so the way that the academy uh the strategic plan is structured is in each one of these goals, we have a vision for where we need to be by twenty thirty, and then a set of supporting strategies that we are using and committing to, to making sure we achieve that goal. So for goal two, that excellence in embedded advanced academics, our vision is threefold. One, that all pathways will provide sufficient embedded episodes for all students to become ready graduates. So that means regardless of which pathway you choose, there should be sufficient opportunities available to you in terms of your advanced academic coursework that you can hit that Tennessee-ready graduate status. Second, that all of our high schools offer some form of an advanced diploma option. So I want to just call it a little bit about the distinction here. It's been true for a very long time, certainly long before I came to M N P S, that all of our high schools offered some kind of advanced academic programming. What we are, so like in terms of individual classes, A P classes, I B, et cetera, what we are committed to is making sure that there is some kind of capstone advanced academic diploma option, such as early college and I B diploma, et cetera, available in all of our zone high schools. And third of all, that A C T preparation and Avid programming is seamlessly embedded in our academy strategy. That really, those are core underlying uh activities that drive everything we do in all of our academies, regardless of which zone high school you attend or which academy you have you have selected and been assigned to. All right, so let's talk a little bit about some of our progress against those goals. So if that is our vision, if we have this threefold vision for where we want to be by twenty thirty in terms of our uh Academies of Nashville uh goal two plan, uh we have these four strategies and we want to share with you a little bit about the progress we've already made since we first launched our strategic plan. So first of all, we're working to build pathway maps that embed episodes and industry certifications, especially ones that are at that high tier of rigor for our students and meaningfully change their earning potential. So where we are right now, we've already mapped all of those pathways, making sure we really understand exactly what courses are offered and available in each of those. And now, as we're preparing for scheduling for next year, we are designing and preparing to give support to all of our high schools to make sure that we are increasing those episodes in each pathway. And realistically, a student, regardless of their pathway, could then be able to graduate as a ready graduate. Um, second of all, we have succeeded now, and uh you guys have heard a lot of early college announcements lately. We now have some form of advanced academic diploma option available in all of our zone high schools. Thank you. I agree. So uh we have, whether it's early college, an I B diploma, a Cambridge diploma, some some sort of capstone experience where students graduate with an advanced academic diploma is now available in every single zoned MNPS high school. Third of all, embedded ACT readiness in all of our academies. This fall, we are launching our first-ever MNPS Takes the ACT Day on October 21st. We're going to start doing this twice per year, once in the, once in the fall, for the juniors to take their practice test. Well, I'll just give you the full rundown. So ninth graders are going to be doing special ACT preparation supports. Tenth graders will be doing pre-ACT. Eleventh graders will be doing their practice tests that prepare them for their first spring take. And seniors will be doing their retakes. And then, in the spring, that's when our juniors will actually be taking that test for the first time. So we're really committed to a model where, moving forward, ACT happens on the same day at all of our zoned high schools. Pre-ACT happens on those middle schools on those same days. So we can build just community-wide support and enthusiasm and consistent messaging for our students about why the ACT still matters for them in their college readiness. And last of all, in embedding Avid practices in all of our academies, we are continuing to support this work through ongoing professional development in school-specific supports to make sure that Avid embeddedness and culture is woven throughout all of the work that we do in our academies. So we're going to switch gears now and talk a little bit about how this Academies of Nashville Strategic Plan supports the work of the Hillsborough Cluster. So again, just, you know, I know you guys have seen this slide a few times now. In Tennessee, three of the four paths to becoming a ready graduate require taking early post-secondary opportunities or EPOs. So again, when we're thinking about how do our students show that they are at that ready graduate status, our students must complete an ACT with a composite score of 21 or higher. We just referenced that's part of our strategy around that MNPS Takes the ACT Day. Or students can complete four EPOs, or they can complete two EPOs and pass an early, an industry credential, or they can take two EPOs and then earn a qualifying score on the ASVAB, which is the Military Entrance Exam. Again, early post-secondary opportunities, that's what EPOs stands for. You can see that full chart along the bottom. Those are all of the different EPO opportunities that are offered in the state of Tennessee. Things like AP, IB, Cambridge, et cetera. So today, we're going to be talking about the Hillsborough Cluster, which offers five of these opportunities. AP Dual Enrollment, IB Dual Credit, and Industry Certification. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Chief Perry, who is going to introduce the principals of the Hillsborough Cluster. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Battle. You all look absolutely marvelous in your green tonight. Thank you, Chief Chan, for painting such a clear picture of where we are headed with the Academies of Nashville. Nearly 20 years ago, the academies transformed the face of high school education, not just here in Nashville, but in the world and across the country. Today, as we look ahead to Academy 2030, it is clear that this work is evolving to meet the changes of an ever-changing world. And that evolution is not happening in isolation. It is deeply connected to our broader vision of MNPS Reimagine. Reimagine is about creating a consistent and aligned student experience for every single student across every grade level and in every cluster. It is our commitment that no matter where a child attends in Nashville public schools, their journey is anchored in three core experiences. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that elementary experience. This is the foundations, our guaranteed experience of what our children in the elementary space will be experiencing around their curriculum, their core content, and their SEL. This helps to prepare them to be successful in their middle school experiences. Without the elementary experiences, it is hard for our kids to be successful. We get those foundations in elementary. Then we move to the magic in the middle, where our kids are experiencing the personalized experiences, where the teaching adapts them to their needs, their interests, their strengths, and where strong community partnerships make their learning relevant and engaging. These two, the elementary and the middle, combined together is what makes for a great foundation for our kids. Without the elementary and middle experiences, this is what it takes to make them successful in high school. And this is where we have our applied experiences. Our Hillsbury Cluster is a great example of what happens in elementary, how it builds in our magic in the middle, and really sets them up nicely for our high schools.
She meant Hillsboro.
Hillsboro. Who did I say?
Hillsberry.
Hillsberry. Where did I get that from?
Sounds a little bit like a biscuit, maybe? The Hillsbury biscuits?
Thank y'all so much. This Hillsborough Cluster is a powerful example of this vision in action and what happens when we have a strong foundation in our elementary and middle schools, coupled with what our applied experiences in high school. From our guaranteed foundations to our personalized supports and then our applied opportunities and through the academies at Hillsborough High. Those schools embody what it means to ensure that every student is known. They are challenged and they are prepared for life after graduation. It is my privilege and my honor to introduce the proud principals of the Hillsborough Cluster, leaders who are bringing this vision to life every single day, not just for their students, but being an example for all. Come on up, Hillsboro.
All right. Good evening. I'm Danielle Holdren. I'm the Executive Principal at Hillsborough High School. And long before students arrive at Hillsborough, their educational journey begins in the nurturing classrooms of our outstanding feeder schools. It's my privilege to introduce the dedicated teams who lay the foundation for your child's success. Their work is deeply connected to our shared mission of preparing every student to be globally-minded, locally-rooted.
Hi, I'm Trey Stevens, Principal of Weston Middle School. And I'm also going to introduce Dr. Gary Hughes of JT Moore, who unfortunately wasn't able to be here today.
Dr. Andy Davis, Principal at Julia Green Elementary School.
Russell Young, Principal of Percy Priest Elementary.
Dr. Robin Schumate, Principal of Waverly Belmont.
Gina Collins, Principal of Glendale Spanish Immersion School.
Elizabeth Gatz, Principal at Sylvan Park Padea Design Center.
And Dr. Maddie Crumbo, Principal of Aiken Elementary School. Today, we are going to walk you through a student's journey in the Hillsborough Pre-K Through 12 International Baccalaureate Cluster, where we are globally-minded and locally-rooted. All students in the Hillsborough Cluster experience the IB Primary Years Program at the elementary level, then the Middle Years Program at the middle school tier, and finally, the high school level. They can choose between two tracks, the diploma program and the career program. So tonight, join us as we explore the Hillsborough Cluster through the lens of a student, Billy the Borough, who we will refer to as Billy. During our Primary Years Program, students build a foundation of the IB learner attributes, qualities like being a risk-taker, caring, or open-minded. These shape the full IB learner profile. These attributes come to life at the elementary level in the Hillsborough Cluster through experiences such as morning announcements and morning meetings, where students use their voice to share what an attribute like being caring means to them and naturally connect to daily experiences. Author visits, where K Through 2 students, Billy and his peers, take a deep exploration of text that highlight attributes such as being a risk-taker. World Language Classes, experiential learning for all students to a world language and multicultural experiences. Socratic Seminars, where students practice speaking and listening skills while being open-minded and thinking critically. Programs of Inquiry. Here, students go through programs of inquiry. An example is how we organize ourself. And we invite elected officials to come and speak to our students explaining their role as citizens. Student Portfolios, where students have an IB portfolio through the K Through 5th Grade and they reflect on their own growth as well as interacting with the learner attributes. Field Trips, opportunities to connect our attributes to real-world situations. And finally, Celebrations, where students are recognized as they learn and embody our attributes. Dr. Davis is going to continue to share Billy's journey with you through the second half of the PYP experience.
Thank you, Dr. Crumbo. Billy's journey through the IB Primary Years Program is full of growth and opportunity. In 3rd Grade, as academics become more rigorous, he shows what he knows through TN Ready Assessments. Billy will continue to hone the IB learner attributes through his school experiences. For example, he does an in-depth biographical research project on a local, regional, or global figure who embodies an IB learner profile attribute, bringing that attribute to life in meaningful ways. Billy, William to his parents, chooses Albert Einstein and connects him to the IB learner attribute of knowledgeable. He researches the life of Einstein and how he exemplified being knowledgeable. It culminates when he dresses up and participates in the 3rd Grade Wax Museum as Albert Einstein himself. By 4th Grade, Billy's truly balanced, sharpening his critical thinking in class, working on, through classes like the 4th Grade Science Fair with a partner, while running cross-country, playing basketball, and kicking goals by participating in the MNPS Elementary Sports League. And in 5th Grade, leadership takes center stage. Billy becomes a communicator by participating in student government, being an ambassador for the school, and completing the IB PYP Exhibition. A capstone where students explore real-world issues, take action, and reflect on their learning as global citizens. Billy and a small group of three or four other students, their exhibition project is revamping the school garden for all kindergarten through 5th Grade classes. They work with mentors, adult mentors, such as the gifted and talented teacher and an agent from the Tennessee Department of Agriculture on designing lessons for those K-5 classes, planning schedule of native Tennessee plants, and learning about garden sustainability and its impact on our planet. And with that guaranteed experience, he is now off to middle school.
Transitioning from elementary school to JT Moore Middle School or Weston Middle School, both international baccalaureate institutions, will offer Billy Borough a rich and diverse array of experiences that foster both academic and personal growth. Billy Borough will engage in a rigorous curriculum that emphasizes inquiry-based learning and critical thinking, aligning with the IB learner profile attributes such as being knowledgeable, open-minded, and reflective. Exploring these opportunities in the guaranteed experience of elementary, Billy learns to dive into more clubs like drama. Maybe he does some band and tries out that, while still participating in all of the academic opportunities available to him at the middle school. Billy finds opportunities to excel in subjects like mathematics, science, and language arts, while also being encouraged to explore his creative side through the drama and arts. Our students engage in a culminating IB project in 8th Grade, wherein each student works independently or in a group to identify and clearly define a problem within the school community, develop solutions for them, and to implement those solutions. Billy decides to research further upon the exhibition he did in 5th Grade and proceeds to take his garden project out into the community where he finds food deserts, and him and his group continue to try to aim for ways to, as middle schoolers were, find solutions to global problems. Because again, we're globally-minded but still locally-rooted.
Okay. At Hillsborough High School, we don't just teach, we inspire. An international baccalaureate world school, we embed the IB learner profile traits into everything we do, shaping students into thoughtful, principled, and globally-minded individuals. Hillsborough High School is the only school to offer three different IB programs. The IB Middle Years Program, the IB Career Program, and the IB Diploma Program. Every student at Hillsborough High School has the opportunity to culminate their high school career with an IB distinction at graduation, including a course completer, career, or diploma, while they're also celebrated as a ready graduate. Each month, Hillsborough selects an IB learner trait of the month, such as a thinker, communicator, or risk-taker. And across all academies, each student who exemplifies that trait are celebrated and spotlighted, recognized not just for their academic achievement, but for the way they lead, collaborate, and grow. At Hillsborough High School, the IB learner traits are more than words. They're the heartbeat of our school culture. From the moment Billy walks through our doors, he begins a transformative journey through the International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program in the 9th and the 10th Grade. During Billy's freshman and sophomore year, he will participate in three core learning experiences. Interdisciplinary projects, where Billy explores connections between subjects like combining science and humanities to study climate change, encouraging deeper understanding and creative problem-solving. Inquiry-based learning, where instead of memorizing facts, Billy will ask questions, investigate topics, and present his findings. For example, in science, he might design and conduct experiments. And in language arts, he'll analyze literature and write persuasive essays. And then finally, global context across all units, where they are framed around a global theme such as identities and relationship, globalization and stability, and fairness and development. These learning experiences help Billy see how his learning applies to the real world. This rigorous inquiry-based curriculum challenges him to think critically, explore global issues, and culminates in a personal project, a deep dive into a topic he's passionate about. The personal project is a major independent research project in which Billy selects a topic he cares about, sets goals, and creates something meaningful. And examples can include building a prototype, writing a book, organizing a community event, or creating a documentary. It's a chance for Billy to showcase his skills, passions, and growth. He also hones his communication skills through the presentation of the personal project to his peers and community members, identifying the impact of the global issue to our local community. As Billy is completing the NYPD, he also selects his Career Academy, aligning his interest with real-world pathways that prepare him for life beyond high school. During his junior and senior years, Billy can pursue either the IB Career-related Program or the IB Diploma Program, both internationally-recognized pathways which prepare students to think critically, communicate effectively, understand global issues, and prepare for life after high school. If Billy selects the Diploma Program, he's selecting a challenging academic experience and planning to attend college or university. During his 11th and 12th Grade Years, Billy will take six subjects and complete the Theory of Knowledge Course, where he will learn how we know what we know. He will also complete an extended essay, which is a research paper on a topic of his choice. And lastly, a CAS project, Creativity, Activity, and Service, which includes volunteering, sports, and creative projects. If Billy selects the Career Program, he is selecting career and skills focus alongside the challenging academic experience. This program combines career-focused courses with IB academic courses. Billy will have the opportunity to select six IB courses of interest. Throughout this program, he will complete the Personal and Professional Skills Course, where he'll be learning communication, ethics, and teamwork. He'll participate in service learning, where he will be giving back to the community. He will also complete a reflective project, where he explores a real-world issue related to his career. And lastly, Billy will participate in language development, which will give him the opportunity to improve communication in another language. Through the IB Career Program in 11th and 12th Grade, Billy will continue to build upon his strong foundation by engaging in academy-specific coursework, including classes that offer industry certifications and hands-on learning. Through partnerships with local businesses, he will gain invaluable experience and mentorship in his chosen fields. At Hillsborough, every student is an IB student. And every student is empowered to embody the IB learner traits from being inquirers and communicators to principled leaders and reflective thinkers. At Hillsborough High School, every learner is a leader, and every leader is a learner. So, why the Hillsborough Cluster? We are a culture of continuous character development. We are celebrating and honoring students with, through excellence and integrity. We have dynamic learning environments, which prepare students for college, career, and citizenship. To be part of the K-12 Experience, where learning goes beyond the classroom, and every student is empowered to become the best version of themselves. The Hillsborough High School Cluster, building future leaders who are globally-minded and locally-rooted.
As we close, I want to bring us back to the heart of MNPS Reimagine. Billy Borough, you have seen him go through elementary with our guaranteed experience in all of our elementary schools and as they engage in the PYP Program. They personalize Billy's experience in the middle school. They personalize Billy's experience in the middle school as he is going through the NYPD program. And as he goes on to high school, Billy Burrow is soaring away, and he has the opportunity to complete the NYPD and then choose the Diploma Program or the CP Program. The Hillsborough Cluster is living proof of our vision in MMPS Reimagine. Our principals are building strong academic foundations, personalizing those experiences, and preparing every student for the future through their learning. This is what it means that in Nashville public schools, every student is known, not just by name, but by their strength, by their need, and by their potential. So, let's celebrate our leaders today. Let's also recommit ourselves to the unified vision of MMPS Reimagine, where together across every cluster, we are preparing students not just for the next grade, but for college, career, and life. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Battle.
Again, thank you all for your incredible leadership. We'll have a seat, and we're going to engage in kind of a Q&amp;A session that might include some of you. So, we'll let you know if we have a question that is best suited for our fabulous leaders to respond to. Chair Blair.
Is there any questions or comments? Oh, we'll start. Okay, we'll switch it up. We'll start with our junior student, student school board member.
Hi, so this is like my first time asking questions, so beware. Okay, so with having such, you know, academic, like rigorous work since their early ages, do you think that might lead to burnout for their own? And if so, how are you going to combat that?
So, I think that would be a great question for one of our leaders to respond to. The question is grounded in, because of the rigor that students will be engaged in, how are you and your school teams supporting students to create balance so that they can complete their IB experience?
Thank you. Thanks for being a risk-taker by asking that question. That is, and really, that does kind of get to the core of, and we really begin at the elementary level, of building that sense of being a risk-taker and being an enquirer and having a commitment to learning. And so, we do it in engaging way through transdisciplinary learning, but we create it in an atmosphere of showing the value of learning and that students are responsible for their own learning. And so, I think really through that sense of embedding, that sense of being an enquirer, being inquisitive, that kind of keeps the fire of thirst for knowledge always going on.
Speaking of that, so there's a course in the IB program called Theory of Knowledge, T-O-K. If you've ever experienced it and have an opportunity to observe it, it is magnificent. It's really inspiring and motivating for students because you're really thinking about the way that you think. And so, through a lot of the IB courses, programs, the expos that happen, you tend to see a lot more excitement and engagement because of the connectivity to what students are learning, to who they are, and how they can have impact in the future. And so, it's a great question because just simply based upon the opportunity and exposure, it actually kind of fuels students to do more. But of course, as educators, we're always looking at how we balance those experiences so that they can persist through their K-12 journey.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions?
Just one more question. I'm not sure if you guys can answer this, but how will his college experience be compared to someone who hasn't gone through the IB program?
So, I think that might be a good question to talk about, particularly how will students or a student, like where do they land when they graduate? Just if you could talk about kind of the college exposure, principal holding, and what kind of credits might transfer for your high school graduates.
So, as students come in sophomore year and they're looking at those, or deciding which pathway they're going to select, we're going to first encourage them to do some serious looking into their colleges of interest, because that will help them identify. They can go ahead and start researching which classes will transfer, scores that are potentially needed. And then, those classes are going to, they are college-level classes, but they're built into the high school. So, we're able to add more supports, more supports through counseling, outside services, there are teachers to really build a foundation. So, when they go to college, they are well-prepared to handle that level of study, whether it be through ability to write and develop those papers and have study skills to be able to work independently through some of those classes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on this side? All right, Dr. Crambo, Kenny, and then Ms. Tyler.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for telling us all a little bit more about the McGavick Cluster and all the great things that you are, I mean, Hillsborough. Did I say McGavick? My bad. Hillsborough Cluster, I got on the whole shirt I'm representing, I apologize. The McGavick, I mean, the Hillsborough Cluster and all the great opportunities that you have. I have a quick question, I apologize, I'm so sorry. I have a question, can you talk a little bit about the three different IB opportunities that you offer? I heard...
Principal Holdren, you mentioned in the portfolio at Hillsborough.
That you're the only?
Yes. But also, I'll let you respond, and I want to just make sure we emphasize the continuum of those experiences.
Sure. So, every student as a ninth and a 10th grader is part of that Middle Years Program, and that's where we continue the work that they started at the middle school level. That one's going to be across all classes, and it's going to be looking at embedding a very rigorous framework for our students to prepare them to take on that NYPD, or the DP, or the CP program. So, when we move them into that 10th grade year, that's where we're going to have the students start differentiating. So, an intro class for our DP pathway is the AP Seminar Class, which builds a foundation of writing and prepares the students to be able to take on those Diploma Program courses where they are heavier writing-based and making sure that students can carry on. The Diploma Program is going to have students prepared to go straight into college or university. The Career Program is going to allow students to also pursue those industry certifications, and it lets them select the classes of interest, where DP, the students have six set courses that they take, and CP, they can take up to six courses plus those industry certifications.
Thank you. And the only one that wasn't mentioned was the PYP program that is representative in our elementary schools. So, PYP, NYPD, DP, and CP. And three of those programs are under one roof at Hillsborough but are represented across all of our elementary, middle, and high. Thank you.
Clarify, YP.
PYP is a Primary Years Program, so it's for your youngest learners. NYPD is your Middle Years Program, but as was just described, can expand up into the ninth and 10th grade year because you can declare for the Diploma Program until after your 10th grade year. And the CP program is the latest program in the IB portfolio that allows for us to really prepare students for college and career.
Thank you, and again, I apologize, Hillsborough Cluster. My daughter was a graduate of Hillsborough in 2016, and she went through the IB program. So, I just wanted to learn a little bit more. She did not get the elementary or the middle school experience, but she did get the high school experience, and it was great for her. Thank you.
And Dr. Perry, she laughed at Chief Recan, Hillberry, and she called a whole nother school. Pot and kettle. Member Tyler.
Just a quick clarification, I heard you say that there are three IB programs, Diploma, Career, and did I mishear that? Are there, is there a third one? What is that?
Hillsborough, in Hillsborough's portfolio, they have the Middle Years Program, ninth and 10th, the Diploma Program, which you can graduate with Diploma, and then the Career Program, which is CP.
And everybody is in the Middle Years, and you don't make your decision until after your 10th grade year? That makes sense. Thank you.
Remember Wynne? Okay, hello, this might be a question that Chief Chan or Dr. Battle you can answer, but as a student in a CTE pathway and in our academy on model, how are we reimagining things in 2030 to fit more in all students? And how are we strategizing which academies go to each school?
Chief Chan, if you want to put in, I'm sure you won't need me.
Yeah, I have more information on this than I think you all probably want. So, we have, the Academies of Nashville Strategic Plan is built out over, I'm sorry, is built out over five years. This year, one is really focused on making sure that we've taken a full step back and really understand exactly what's going on in our schools and how is it working for our students. So, we have, we have a team with ERS that we're working with, we have a team with Vanderbilt, and then we also have student-led youth participatory action research projects that are digging into three of our high schools to really make sure that we understand the entire landscape of how is this going, what is working, what is working that we need to continue to invest in, what needs to evolve to still make sure that this is the best possible high school strategy for all of our students. So, that's like, that was really more to answer your question around, how do we know what's the data that we're looking at? And in that work, of course, we're looking at things like grad rate, what classes students have taken, their success in those classes, and even looking at like student interest forms. So, when we look at things like, you know, you all, you might remember this, you did a career inventory in eighth grade, and looking at actually finding out, did you get to participate in things that were interesting to you when you got to high school? So, that's sort of the first set of work in terms of like, what is the information we're digging into, and how are we, how are we telling that story with data and making sure that we're using that to inform our decision-making on this? I think the second question you asked was around CTE and advanced academics. That's also something that especially as we've now made sure that we have these advanced diploma options available in all of our high schools, making sure that we've given schools really clear models along how that fits alongside the CTE sequence and the pathway model, so that kids aren't positioned in a way that they feel like they have to pick one or the other, or that one pathway is closed off to students given their interests, making sure we've been really clear with our schools around how to make sure we're creating those great opportunities for all kids.
And then, let me, let me just add to that because the Career Academy experience is really developed through lots of stakeholder engagement. So, we partner with the Chamber of Commerce, we partner with all of our anchor partners, which is Forward Next Generation Learning, pencil alignment. We have business leaders from every sector that help advise us on what the industry is calling for, what the workforce will be demanding once you graduate. And that's sometimes a little more difficult for students to gauge because you see what you see right now, but we are preparing you for what you will truly experience once you graduate. That includes advisory boards, that includes parents, college partners, other business leaders, students, of course, our academy coaches, and other leaders within our school. So, a pretty robust set of folks who help really guide us on which of those industry career experiences are available to our students.
Gotcha, thank you so much. I really do ask that question because I know of a lot of students who possibly didn't get their first choice for an academy, or for example, might want to go into a pathway that's available at Hillsborough, but we're at Overton, so we don't have X, Y, and Z. And a lot of the times, those opportunities can be life-changing, life-altering. A student might use an industry certification that they got in high school for the rest of their life. So, I feel like that's a relevant conversation to have, and thank you for your answers, guys.
Thank you. Any other comments? Member Harold Block?
I have a couple of questions before making a comment or two. But, so, just, I wanted to follow on Board Member Wynne's questions. I'm interested in knowing more about how we know and what we might need to know in order to know which sort of pathways, which job opportunities, which things are available in Nashville, what kinds of industry certifications are required and available jobs, and then how we're translating that, not just for this planning purpose, but like on an annual and, you know, review basis?
I'll let Chief Chan respond to that, but this is ongoing. We do a deep dive every year around that particular data, but there's ongoing checkpoints and milestones throughout the year for us to progress monitor. These are great questions, and the cool thing about this is that we truly lead the nation in this work. So, we're often sought out to help other districts think about how they're identifying their Career Academy pipelines and the structures that are in place, what it takes to be wall-to-wall Career Academy-based, so on and so forth. But, Chief Chan, if you want to specifically just talk about how we do our mapping to help advise us in this space.
Yeah, so we, so in Tennessee, there's a designation of a pathway called H3, and it stands for Highway, High Demand, High Skill. And that indicates that a pathway aligns to a career opportunity that I think is self-explanatory. The job is high-paying, it is in demand, and they actually get to the level of granularity that they distinguish between whether it's high-demand in metro Nashville versus in the state of Tennessee, and then high-skill is, is there some sort of advanced degree or certification of some kind required to do that. So, one of the things that we are doing across many dimensions is looking at each of our pathways and understand which of them are H3, and if a pathway is not H3, making sure that we've really thought about the why behind it, that if we're going to offer a pathway that doesn't offer that, there still might be a really good reason for that to be available in that high school, but that we've been really thoughtful about that, we're continuing to monitor that on an ongoing basis. The second thing, I think, is understanding just all of the data around exactly what industry credentials are available and why, and that's actually emerging as a really complex and hot-button issue across the country that I think, I feel very lucky that we are able to be leading on with this. So, in Tennessee, all industry credentials are rated on a three-pathway tier. It's like tier one, tier two, and tier three, and those tierings refer to how likely is it that getting that credential will actually change your career opportunities? So, another thing that we're looking at through our pathway process is really making sure if we are offering those industry credentials as that capstone experience for a pathway that as often as possible, again, we're tying it to those tier-three opportunities, and if we're not doing that, there's a really good reason why. Not like, you know, as Dr. Battle always says, it's not just something we're doing because it's the way we've always done it, but really making sure we've done that review process and made sure that it's deliberate. So, I think those are just two dimensions of how we're answering that question right now. But as Dr. Battle mentioned, in terms of like the work we are doing to drive the strategic plan forward, we have a steering committee that is meeting, you know, I check in once a week, we have the full steering committee that meets monthly on this, like really digging into the data behind all those questions is at the heart of why we're getting this flexible team together to make sure that we have that strong plan heading into 2030.
Thank you, and I don't want to let go without you, you mentioned, Dr. Chan, that there was a student group as well, so can you just talk a little bit about what that looks like?
I would love to. I think something that we're really proud of with the Academies of Nashville Strategic Plan is the degree to which we've been committed to elevating student voice. So, we actually have, three of our high schools are going to be doing completely youth-driven projects to understand from the student perspective, where kids are actually organizing the focus groups, designing the surveys, and surveying their peers to really understand how are kids experiencing the academies, what can we be doing to continue and evolve and make those a great experience for our kids? Right now, we just have the scale to do it at three schools. I think it's something that this is, we're piloting, and we're really eager to see if there's opportunities to scale that to other places. But just if you, even if you don't go to one of those three schools, there are lots of opportunities for student voice embedded in the plan. So, in addition to that, we also have a qualitative research team that is going out and doing student interviews, teacher interviews, principal interviews, and then of course, as Dr. Battle mentioned, community partner and business partner interviews. So, we have that full qualitative perspective with a deep grounding in our students' voice to make sure that that is coming through loud and clear in our plan. In addition to, of course, all of the great quantitative data we have on our kids in terms of their career interest surveys, how those classes actually worked out for them, what their grades were, all of that is stuff that we can look at to really understand and make sure we have a full picture of the way that our academies are working for our students.
Awesome, thanks.
I'm so excited.
I'm sure Ava and Hannah would like to volunteer themselves to, to help you as you do that, too. Yeah, and Ms. Tyler would like me to ask which high schools are in the pilot program of the student voice?
I hope the principals aren't upset at me for saying this out loud. It's Stratford, Hunter's Land, and Antioch.
And one last question, and then I have two other questions, sorry, for the Hillsborough folks, and then I'm done, I promise. What's the timeline? Like, will we hear reports back on sort of progress, and what will that look like from a like timeline perspective over the course of the year with planning and that type of thing?
With regards to the AON Strategic Plan? Yeah, you'll get periodic updates. Over the next few sessions, you're going to get a few more tidbits around the AON plan. But you'll see milestones throughout the year as we make significant progress towards the pillars that have been established.
And then, Dr. Hold, this question's for Dr. Holdren. Just we, last, last week, last board meeting, we had Hunter's Lane here talking about IB. And there was some conversation about, some conversation about the sort of number of students in DP versus CP. That's the diploma program versus the career program. Can you talk a little bit about how you all are thinking about that and trying to diversify kids across programs? And then the part two is just, we didn't talk any about the industry certifications you all have available. If you have a couple that are like big-picture industry certifications, that'd be great too.
Principal Holdren, can I just give you a shout-out real quickly? So this might have not come out as strongly as it should because it's great work. One of the things that Principal Holdren has taken on as Executive Principal at Hillsborough is kind of reclassifying the portfolio of advanced academics at Hillsborough. We, in years past, had just one standalone IB Academy. And she's worked really, really hard, as you've heard her describe, in ninth and 10th grade, like bringing access to students all across the entire learning community. And it's just to be commended and thinking about just all of the access points. Sometimes you don't know until you've experienced. And you've got a little taste of what it means to be an IB student. Of course, now, because of these great experiences in elementary and middle school, students are going to come even more prepared and more aware of their learner profile and how they can continue to be globally-minded and locally-rooted through their IB journey. So I just wanted to shout that out, but also really to uplift the work of every leader because of the strong pathway you all are creating for students to move on to high school and graduate as the most competitive young people in Nashville and are going to be competitive across the country and the world, so.
So our DP and CP programs, DP runs traditionally approximately 60 students right now. CP has about 120. Part of the attraction for the career program is that the students do get those industry certifications, and it allows them to pick focus areas. So it also gives them access to those career skills moving on. But students are going to make these choices based off of individual counseling sessions during that registration process. We have started, and we just did our first one this past year, an Advanced Academics Fair that we host through the day that every student gets an opportunity to come down. And the students that are in those classes have a chance to sell those classes and talk about the experiences they have and how they bring it into action within themselves. One thing we have started, we have implemented as well to keep that continuum because with an IB class, you cannot take it until your junior year. So we want to make sure that students stay academically challenged. So we've started embedding Advanced Placement or AP classes in as freshmen and sophomores so that students have a chance to dip their toe into those programs and challenge themselves. And teachers are also going to be a big, powerful piece for us as well. This year, we will be working with our teachers to do those individual conversations and recommendations because the biggest factor, the biggest piece to get a student into an advanced academics course and actually try is to have someone tell them they can do it. So that is a big push for us this year is to make sure those kids here, they can do it, and we want to support and make sure they've got those helps throughout.
I, I just want to echo what Dr. Battle said. I asked the question in part because I know the answer, which is all of what you just had said. And I know being both the school board rep for Hillsborough High School and the cluster, and a parent, that, that those experiences are really happening. And my kids are coming home and their friends feeling challenged and supported. And that's from elementary all the way through. I also wanted to just take a last moment to say thank you to all of you for being here, for all of the work that you all do, and invite everyone to come to some of the primary years programs and middle-years programs demonstrations that occur at the end of the year. I've had the opportunity to attend several of them. And it's like, not only is it adorable, but you also can learn a lot. I learn things about historical figures. I've learned things about efforts we need to take, take, to root in our community. And so it really is like the, the continuation of IB from the beginning of elementary all the way through is pretty obvious. So thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions, comment? Member Tyler?
I just had one, one question. If, after their 10th grade year, when they choose either the diploma or the career path, is there any wiggle room to switch if they change their minds? Or once you're in there, are you locked in?
Yes, they have the opportunity to make that shift. That's also going to be through those counseling, those counseling sessions and support sessions. But students absolutely have the opportunity to move, and they can also join. They can do the CP program even come senior year. So if they're not sure they want to do it junior year, they can also make that addition come their senior year.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, and we'll turn Dr. Battle.
Again, just huge shout-out, kudos to the entire cluster. Just fantastic. Thank you all for your planning and your leadership. Also want to take an opportunity to shout out ED Chad Hi, who is here and has been supporting the Hillsborough Cluster as well. We appreciate your leadership. I've, I've had a few opportunities to sit in on some of these fun planning sessions, and they have a lot of fun. And so anyway, thank you all. Appreciate your time. Appreciate your leadership and your vision for the future for Hillsborough Cluster. Kudos.
Thank you. We appreciate you. And I know it's a school night, so you can leave if you need to. Yeah, I know. Alright, we will now move on to participation. No participants have signed up for public participation. We will now move on to governance issues. We have the consent agenda with 1B14 that's withdrawn. May I have a motion for the consent agenda excluding 1B14? It's been moved by member Young, second by member Mays. All in favor, say aye. Any oppose? The consent agenda passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to item 1B14, System Integrations Incorporated. I'll have to turn Dr. Battle for explanation of the contract, please.
Alright, thank you so much, Chair Player. I'm going to invite up our Chief Operations Officer, Chief Morris Sullivan. She's just going to walk you through some of the details that are related to this specific contract. And then of course, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to entertain them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Thank you, Board. We have a contract on the agenda tonight related to systems integration, as you see. And we have this contract on, sorry, finding my little clicker here. We have this contract on the board agenda to, because we had a great opportunity. We, the State Safety Grant was $1.3 million and for MNPS. And our application needed to be to, to adhere to the requirements of this safety grant to be such that it, that it related to products and items that related to the physical improvement of the security and safety in your school buildings. So we looked at many different items, knowing that our previous schools' security enhancements have been high school weapons detection systems, AI phones at main entrances, badge access at our exterior doors, classroom doors with locking capabilities, three K-9 units for random searches, safety ambassadors for elementary schools, shatter-resistant film, safety cameras and brandish weapons technology, auto audio enhancement in our classrooms with emergency alert buttons for our teachers, security vestibules in all of our buildings, and expansion of our SRO program, and officers on-site at our buildings. So I went through all of those and painfully read each one to you because we have done a lot with your help, with the help of the city, with the help of the state. We have done a lot of things. And so looking at what our next progression would be, and we are always staying current on all of the, the different things that are coming up in this, in this world. We're able to do that because we do have a great contract with our Contractor Systems Integration. And they have, they provide for us an ecosystem of possibilities around security enhancements. So we looked at things that would be possible and looked at all the different things that we could do. And we really did decide that our, that our application would center around asking for dollars to support weapons detection systems into moving that technology into our middle schools. So we have been awarded that grant. And so we are able to now expand the current contract that we have. Current contract allows for expansion of services and products. And with systems integration, just some details for you that this is a current contract. This is just an amendment for that contract. The provider for our Evolve Systems through Motorola is one of the folks from that company. Jill Lemon is here, and she can answer any specific questions about the, the Evolve system. Of course, we've been using it for, for many months now and can answer many questions as well about how it has worked in our schools. But Jill, Jill is here and...
I just wanted to say hello and just express gratitude for the continued partnership. Obviously pledge our continued commitment to your safety of your students, your staff, and your community, and answer any questions that may come up. But we've been really honored to work with the district. And I don't know if you're all aware, but share some best practices that you all have learned with others in the safety community as ambassadors. Like you mentioned, you're sort of leading the way in several aspects. And with safety and security, that's, that's no different. So thank you for sharing in that work with Evolve.
Thanks, Jill. And now I'm going to ask our Chief of Special Projects, Mr. Mason, Dr. Mason Bellamy, pardon me, to come up and talk about the implementation of this next step in our safety in our schools.
Thank you, Chief Sullivan. Good evening, Board. I really just want to start with the holistic picture. I think what Chief Sullivan shared with you is incredibly important to understand the layered security approach and how all of these approaches work in tandem with one another to create the safest environments, welcoming environments. And the Evolve Weapons Detctions Units are a wonderful way to do that. And through, I hate to call it lessons learned in high school because we, it was a very smooth implementation. But that has set us up to extend that implementation in middle schools. You can see some of these questions we've shown you before, the process we go through to determine what's the best setup for a unit. Evolve Systems Integration were instrumental in that in the high school space. They will be again in the middle school space. But I don't want to give you the perception that someone externally comes in and says the unit's going right here, and you're going to adapt everything to make that fit. That is not the way the partnership works. The principals come along beside us in all of this, many of whom have already come to lengthier trainings about how the system functions, how it works, the best practices we've learned already so that their launch will be smooth. But you can see, we're going to look at the space of the campus, what the operational needs of the campus are, staffing analysis, depending on the size of the building, the number of the students in the student body, and transportation considerations. Where's car rider line versus where's bus transportation versus where do we-go buses come in? All of those factors come into play so that we can create a seamless system for the school that again is a welcoming, safe, supportive environment that does not ever hinder the operation of the school. Once the systems are running, students are not late to class because they are walking through these systems. If they're late to class, it's because of Nashville traffic or because they were late for a different reason. And finally, just a little bit further into the implementation planning. Obviously, the next integral step is your approval this evening. And once that happens, the team stands ready to, to begin a smooth implementation over the course of several months, a couple of systems a week as we roll out, taking principal feedback, community feedback into, into consideration wherever we can as to which schools are ready operationally, which ones have some more building buy-in to do as we look at the prep needs for that school. So again, we will work with our principals and our communities to, to roll out a plan that meets everyone's needs. And I think that's really it, other than the communication packages that you've probably already seen that go out to families to prep them. Students get practice with this before we ever go live. Those packages are well-crafted and delivered by our communications officers, translated into multiple languages, signage is outside, often in the school colors so that they can, Billy the Borough may appear on, on a system here or there as would whatever McGavick's student would be if, and continuing a robust training process that, that is not just a one-time sit-and-get. So it's there whenever they need it. I myself go out to schools and help them with this. The Evolve teams help with this, and we all stand at the ready to do that. So, Dr. Battle, I'll turn it back over to you for other questions or considerations.
Thank you, team. Board Chair, I'll turn it back over to you if there are any questions.
Who has questions or comments? Alright, we will start with Board Member Win, and we'll work our way to Board Member Elwah.
Okay, I'm honestly not sure where to start with this. I was probably the last thing I was expecting from this meeting. But as somebody who has walked through that system every day, I think since its inception pretty much, while I can say that the transition is seamless, while I can say there has been certain instances in my school that it has made our schools safer, I don't know how great of an idea it is to put in our middle schools. I wish I could confidently come up here with data to show about Evolve or school safety or how this is making students feel. But truly, my question is, after middle schools, if this is to get passed, is what's next? Is our, our elementary schools? And like I said, like, is this truly something that we're doing to make our schools safer? Or is it something that makes our schools look safe? I went through Evolve for pretty much every single day of the summer of my internship at Hillsborough. I go through Evolve every single morning and every afternoon. I have to take my stuff out whenever for fire drills or whatever it is. There's a lot of, you know, experiences that come with the Evolve system. But yeah, those are my, my two cents.
I would actually kind of like to hear a little bit more about your thoughts about why middle school in particular would not, that it would be problematic.
Well, quite honestly, I think, thinking back to whenever I was in middle school, fifth grade, which I'm not sure how that's developing now, is if that's middle school grade or not? No, okay. But as a sixth grader, I honestly had no awareness of school safety, about why we possibly needed metal detectors in our schools. And then, you know, whenever the conversation came about threats, I just am not sure if metal detectors is exactly the right way to come about that, especially whenever I have the privilege to sit in the seat and think about things fiscally. I think that's the concern.
Well, and I'm happy to respond to that. First of all, we've gotten a lot of feedback from middle school stakeholders, folks who are actually in the seats right now. Middle school, your middle school experience might be a little bit different from the middle school experience today. For instance, of course, we have experienced a very tragic situation in our school community, which wasn't true then. But I will take us back to when I was a middle school student in Nashville Public Schools when the first incident happened. So I remember it very vividly as a middle school student and not a high school student. And so I think that's also important to recognize as well. It has been a safety measure that has been requested for middle schools. If we went back to the original slide, we talked about having a comprehensive safety and security plan. It was much heavier on security than it was on, on safety. And so as we're considering the comprehensive security plan, it's important for us as we're, like we do with everything else, because continuous improvement, thinking about are there additional measures we can put in place? There is not one measure that's 100% for anyone. But the reality is, is that for even our middle school students, just like high school students and adults, it's now a part of kind of our everyday experience. You almost can't go anywhere in, in Nashville or beyond without experiencing, not a metal detector. So there is a very distinct difference between a metal detector and a weapons detection unit. And so we're not planning to implement metal detectors. We're planning to implement weapons detection units that are just an additional safety measure to, as much as possible, keep the focus on teaching and learning and being a kid and not... not hopefully having to think a whole lot around any threats or safety and security threats that could come about in a day-to-day time. But just based upon, will we know as best practice nationally, will we know our data suggests, and that comprehensive layer support as well as the feedback? It's important for us to leverage the funding available to us to implement just what's next as we continue to build a robust plan.
Yeah, and I totally agree with you there, Dr. Battle. It has unfortunately become our reality. It's unfortunate that we have to have this conversation about weapons. And you're right, there definitely is a difference between the weapon detection system and traditional metal detectors, which is so important to highlight. But I definitely think that with the possible rollout of this being in our middle schools where parents have a bigger stake in their child's life, kind of that communication, like even whenever I stepped into Evolve on the first day of school and people telling me what I can and can't have, and all that sort of stuff can be a little bit intimidating. So, I think that with the possibility of this being rolled out, I think just making sure that it's being done the right way and it's being done intentionally is what my priority is in my mind.
Thank you, Member Tyler.
And I know that I've asked you this already, but I would think it behooves us to ask it on the board floor about, one of the things you mentioned was being fiscally responsible. And so, right now, we have a grant for this for one year, but we also know that there are annual costs that are committed to this. So, can you talk a little bit about how are we making sure we're not going to have to cut something from somewhere else?
And so, this, by nature of it being funded through a grant, is considered a pilot, right? And so, part of that is implementing in middle schools, just like we do in high schools. We learned a lot of really good tips and tricks and ways to make it go smoother. Nothing went wrong or bad, but it just helped us be better than we were from the initial implementation. The same thing, by nature of this being a grant, is considered a pilot because we have not secured long-term funding yet. Where the budget season is always ongoing, so we're already having that conversation as we began implementation with middle schools. And so, we'll learn a lot. We'll learn a lot about what's required in a middle school, which is going to be different from what's required in a high school, just based upon sheer numbers of students. Typically, our middle schools are a quarter or maybe nearly half of the student population of a high school. And so, we would have to continue to pursue longstanding, long-term, recurring funding for the future.
Member O'Hara Block?
And can I say that we also started in the same space with high schools. We started as a pilot, then it moved over to our operating budget.
I appreciate Hannah's comments, and it echoes a lot of the conversations I've had with parents and students, which is, in a lot of ways, moving to this point, both in high schools with weapons detection systems and in middle schools with weapons detection systems, is something more than what, as a parent, I ever thought I would want to support, and certainly as a board member as well. But I have, in all of those conversations, had a similar, you end up in a similar place, which is, it is the right thing to end up doing because of where we are, really societally. And that's unfortunate. And there are lots of things that, on this board floor, we end up, not lots, but you know, this happens on occasion, where there are things that we know we need to do, even if we might prefer another choice if other things were possible in our community writ large. There are other things that come down legislatively that we don't necessarily want to be, want to be in the same place as, say, our state legislature might be, but we have to because that's sort of the reality of the situation. And at the end of the day, when I talk to parents at the middle schools I represent, who are just here, about this, it is something that parents and students alike feel is the type of thing that will make them feel more comfortable. Unfortunately, it does remind us regularly, going through these kinds of systems at the library. I went to VU, Vanderbilt University Medical Center the other day with my daughter at a soccer game, at a football game. It's not the right place to be in societally, but we need to be in this place, and so, here we are.
Vice Chair Nabahon Kimmy?
Yep, thank you. Just for our reference again, how many middle schools are we looking at? I think you also mentioned we have a couple of K8s involved in that implementation and then timeline.
So, we will, we're looking at 74, is that right?
We'll have 33 total when you.
I'm thinking about elementary schools. I'm so sorry. 34 middle schools, minus two that are already in the middle school-high school combo. So, we already have piloted this a bit at our two middle schools that are on high school campuses. And so, we're looking at, on average, about two per week. That could slow down or go faster, just depending on the implementation. And then, we do have two currently, we have two K8 schools, and we'll be working closely with those school principals and school teams to determine the best plan for those two specific campuses. But it's important to us that the school team and the school community help advise what they would like more of or less of, given the elementary-middle school combination.
The only thing I would add is our special day school as well, Admiral.
Thank you. And then, a follow-up question for that is, can you talk a little bit about what our thoughts are on elementary?
Yeah, so, for elementary, and I'll take us back, all the way back to February. We initially shared some thoughts around where we might go with middle school. Here we are. Elementary school would likely look much different. We're looking at various strategies for elementary schools. Of course, we already have a strong portfolio in the elementary space. We are looking at potentially the detection units, particularly for visitors in our elementary schools, but coupled with some other strategies that we feel like could further enhance the safety and security at elementary. Yes, just various strategies. Yep.
And that we will be able to try some of those out with the K8s?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Student Board Member Kadash?
I'm going to be completely honest, I fully agree with Hannah on this topic. I do feel like, yes, while I understand we must implement this, I feel like it's going to be very hard for the middle schoolers to adapt, not only because they're very young, but because I felt like, when I was younger and I was at their age, I was not very aware of these threats. So, I do feel like we may need to give them more of an introduction to this before implementing this, and I feel like, how do I put this into words? It's very, because with middle schoolers, they seem to be a bit more rowdy in a sense. So, it may just be very difficult to implement it. But other than that, I fully agree with everything Hannah said, and I feel like it may be a bit more difficult to do that. And while I understand it is necessary, I don't really know how we could do that. But that's my opinion.
Yeah, I think this is not new. Middle school weapon detection units are not new to us because we already do this in a number of our middle schools. So, we've already learned a lot about what works, and believe it or not, our middle school is actually doing a bit better than our high school students most days. And so, first and foremost, as we're looking at this grant, we're talking about this, we're educating now, we would not begin implementation until after fall break. So, that would give us time to share information with families, with students, with educators. We're actually going to be offering some informational sessions in the next few weeks just to get everyone re-acclimated to what the weapons detection units are, what they can be prepared for. But quite frankly, our middle school students who are leveraging it right now do extremely well with the weapons detection units. And, you know, I'll just kind of remind us that when I was a middle school student, when you all were a middle school student, like the landscape has changed quite a bit. And so, it's important for us to be responsive to that. And we've got, we're not just relying on middle school data from other districts. Like, we've actually piloted this already in MPS. So, the middle school at MOK already has a unit as well. And so, it's been going really smooth. We've gotten really good feedback. And I'll echo what Dr. Bellamy said, if somebody's late, it ain't because of the weapons detection unit, it's because of other factors at this point, because we've got it pretty well nailed down. But to you all's point, this is why we've also planned for kind of a runway before we actually implement, also giving some practice time to get everyone used to what that will look like.
Vice Chair Nabahon Kimmy, and then we'll have Member Elrod.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to respond to Ava and also to you. Related to that, I have a middle school son, and in light of the circumstances that have happened, starting with Covenant, prior to Covenant, and all of the school shootings that we've had, those are conversations that are already happening in homes. And there are already conversations that are happening in schools with active shooter drills and all of this. So, I think even our youngest learners are aware, while we, I think we all agree that they shouldn't be exposed at this young age, they are unfortunately. And so, I think I agree that there should be care and concern and over-communication in how we support our youngest learners to be acclimated to these systems. And I also agree that unfortunately, we are in an environment where this has become our new norm. But those conversations are happening. Our kids are already having conversations about it, and I'm sure that they are happening in homes every single day. And I think this is the right step to take to ensure the health and safety of all of our kids moving forward. So, thank you.
Member Elrod?
Thank you. I too have two middle schoolers. I would say, I think, Member O'Hara Block said, as a parent, or maybe I, I'm not going to mention you because I don't want to add words to your mouth, as a parent and also as a school board member, I would like to not have to do this, but I feel like it's necessary. That said, I have to agree with both of you that our middle schoolers are obviously very different students than our high schoolers. That's why they're in middle school, they're in a whole different grade tier. So, I think that behooves me to ask the question of, I know that every time that we implement an Evolve System or have previously within our high schools, there's been a site-by-site evaluation of what that's going to look like, whether, where it's going to be placed, what kind of staff need to be trained on it, that kind of thing. Are there any special considerations that we are considering or that we should consider or that we can still consider before the implementation as it goes into middle school? Because those are different learners, they're different ages, and they may have different needs.
Yes, of course. I mean, these are site-by-site assessments. We've already started that engagement, by the way. I've spent hours already with principals and teachers kind of talking through the considerations around middle school. I think we're all pretty well versed in the elementary, middle school, and high school experience and things that we should consider in that space. But yes, I mean, these are going to be site-by-site assessments on placement, on training, on what the needs are to make it as, to ease into this and to make it as manageable as possible.
Yeah, I appreciate both of you saying what you, how you feel about it. I think that's an important thing for us to hear, because though I know it was much different when I was in middle school, that was also much, I'm not going to say how much longer it was than y'all, but it was longer ago than y'all from being in middle school. And so, I appreciate y'all saying such. Again, I think it is not the silver solution to the problem and that we have to take a multi-tiered approach. My hope, again, is that we consider it seriously, not just as we go through each tier, whether it's through high school to middle school, but also as we may be considering elementary school. As again, I think we need to consider each one individually and not make a blanket association of what we're going to do. But again, I think it's a necessary need in middle schools. And yes, some of the kids are going to be rowdy. I have one of them. He's going to, he's going to need some practice for sure going in there. So, I appreciate the site-by-site considerations. Please let me know about one of mine. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Member O'Hara Block and the Member Tyler?
Just really quickly to clarify, Dr. Battle, you mentioned that there are middle schools that have been doing some of this, and I'm assuming that's the schools that are hosted on, co-hosted, high school-middle school campuses?
Yes. That's right. Member Tyler?
Yeah, I think, I just feel like it behooves us to say, we can only respond to the societal changes around us by what we have control over. And unfortunately, we don't have control over making stricter gun laws that over 80% of Tennesseans want. And we don't have control over forcing people to be more responsible with their safe storage of their guns, which I don't know that there's percentages on that, but I can guarantee it's going to be high as well. These are just common sense safety issues that most people, including a large majority of gun owners themselves, want to see happen. That happens at the state legislature level. That happens at the federal level in some cases. And that's something that we need to continue to push for and advocate for because we can only respond with what we have control over. And I hate that we have to harden our schools in some instances because it is the absolute antithesis of what we should be doing with our schools. We should be having open, welcoming places where our students feel safe and loved. And we are still going to do that to the best of our ability, no matter what we have to do on the outside. And I think that we need to be constantly reevaluating, how is this system working? Is it doing what it needs to be doing? Is this actually going to be a piece of the puzzle to help solve this larger problem that we did not create, that we don't have control over stopping on the outside? And so, we can only respond with what tools we have available to us. So, I think it's, it's important to remember that the control that we do have, we have to respond in whatever's going to keep our students safe in the best possible way. But that does not mean that we should stop the advocating on the larger level for the larger pieces that will actually make the largest, best impact towards a societal change to make not just our students, but families and everybody in our communities safer on gun control legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Student Board Member Kadash?
I just had a question for you. How are students with accommodations handled? Because I know that the Evolve System flags metal, so like students maybe who are in wheelchairs and things of that sort, how is that handled?
If it's okay with you, I'll jump in there. We actually have one of our own schools, Harris Hillman, where many of our students use ambulatory equipment. And so, the system has multiple adaptations you can make as well as as you go through it. If you've ever been to Alert Resolution, the iPad they're using targets where on your person that an item might have triggered it by a red box indicated where a search would need to go. So, students that use wheelchairs or ambulatory equipment have a variety of options on how to go through the system and still maintain the dignity of the person. And so, I'm the one who, in addition to the Evolve team offering training to a school when it's implemented, I personally have been working with all of our middle schools and our high schools and training them on SEL practices that we want to see integrated with this too. And one of the fundamental principles is maintaining the dignity of the person that's going through the search. So, my wife, for example, uses a wheelchair, and if she were going through, I would want someone to give her the option to either stay in her chair or walk out of her chair if she were able to. Obviously, many wheelchair users aren't able to. So, every system, or every situation is going to be unique, but we should always go with what is, maintaining the integrity of the screening process while maintaining the dignity of the person. And to some of your other questions about the SEL practices in the middle school, we also go over pretty intently the people who are working different stations and how it's important to maintain a welcoming tone. And when you're encouraging students to have their laptops and binders out, to make sure you're doing that with a smile on your face, and how it's such a good opportunity to greet students versus raising your voice and shouting reminders about what to have out. So, just like we do with how we create an inclusive welcoming in all of our schools, we want to greet people with a smile and encourage them to do well and say, "Good morning. Thank you for having your things out." But I appreciate that question. That's a very insightful question.
Thank you. And then, I also had a question for Dr. Battle. I was here, obviously, whenever we were talking about elementary schools, so what is that looking like? Like, what are our thoughts on having Evolve Systems in elementary schools? Is it something that we are possibly implementing or not?
No, it's currently not the plan for usage for students in elementary schools. But again, we'll continue to. But again, we'll continue to study and look into that. If there's a change, then that'll be a conversation we'll have, but currently, that's not the plan.
Okay.
Right, Student Board Member, when?
I just wanted to say, I thought you said something really, really meaningful that I think is the whole message I'm trying to get out here. It's not that our schools don't deserve these systems, it's not that our schools don't need these systems, it's not about the age of the person going through it, it's about maintaining the dignity of the person, dignity going through, of the person going through the system. I think that especially with the middle school age, and as I was saying, parents being such a stakeholder in the life, if I was a parent, if I were my parents, I wouldn't want my student being yelled at, I wouldn't want my student to be shunned for not having a laptop out, and I wouldn't want the only thing to be told to me to just be a four-letter acronym that I get through an email. There deserves to be a larger conversation to be had, there deserves to be a conversation that maybe, you know, certain students are getting at home about school safety and what's going on, but for some students, that might be something that they believe that is far from them and that they are indifferent to. So yeah, having that conversation and putting it into all of our schools, every single middle school, making sure that every student is seen, but they're also heard and valued with their feedback on these systems as well.
I hate that we're in this position, and I think go back to several of the school board members said, this issue's bigger than us. We had Uvalde, we had Covenant, we had Sandy Hook, and this is unfortunate part where our most vulnerable and our most innocent, we have to go through this process to protect our own children. And this is something that we do not want to do in an ideal situation, but where we are as society has forced us to, what someone said, protect our own and protect what we can control. In an ideal world, we as community, in the political arena, in the community arena, in the parenting, and important people that are around, we would take greater responsibility into protecting our children. As I said, I do not have children, but I still think it's my responsibility to take children that are not my own, just because they are humans, and they are here, and they are a part of our society. And I think it's important as we as leaders to communicate that to the public. I want to thank our two student board members to really give your voice to this, to for people to understand what it's like as a student to have to go through this, because adults have not made the correct decisions, have not made the moral decisions to protect who you are as people, but also understand what it does to your dignity and innocence. And that the fact that we have to be this way because we as adults haven't done our job to protect you. And that's our goal, our ultimate goal. It's unfortunate part, if you go to a Taylor Swift concert at Nissan Stadium, at the Ryman, at Ascend, you're gonna go through Evolve. If you go literally down the street to Vanderbilt 100 Oaks for an exam, for pediatric exams, you're going through Evolve. And the fact that we have to have an Evolve system or integrated system to go just get a check from your pediatrician, to go see a concert, so we won't happen what happened in Las Vegas, happen here, is unfortunate. And I just call on the community, I call on other elected officials, I call on parents to step up and do more for our children. They deserve more, they deserve to be protected, and what that looks like in multiple, in multiple methods. Part of it is gun control, part of it is gun safety in the home, part of it is the proper education, and also part of it is the mental health of our citizen's entry, and making sure people have the resources and the therapies they need, so it never gets to this situation. And so we as a community, put more resources and more dignity to mental health and to more, and to public safety, particularly when it comes to gun safety and gun education for everybody, no matter how small you are to how old you are. We as a school board, and other school boards across the country, we're not the only one, we're not immune to this, are going to have to do this. And so until the day that school shootings are obsolete, and I pray that will be tomorrow, but unfortunately, we're not in a space to do that, that we're just asking everyone to really have these conversations, to be thoughtful about it, and to understand that we do not take decision lightly. We have been speaking for this for almost 45 minutes, to give us the space and the dignity and respect that we need. So to the school board members, we hear you, we understand you, we empathize with you, because we don't want you to have to go through what happened last year, but also understand it's school, it's an intimate place, this is a place where you learn, this is your educational family, and you have your social aspects here, you have your academic aspects there, and we don't take that lightly. And we understand the importance of the school, community, and school atmosphere, and we want to know that we understand that, and we, when we say every student's known, we really mean that. And we mean that when we teach our adults to make sure, and sometimes we have to reinforce that, you are humans, you deserve dignity, you deserve respect. Just because you're not, you're under 18, doesn't mean that you don't have a voice in the system, and that your voice needs to be heard, and that your emotions need to be heard and need to be regarded. And we want to make sure that, I hopefully I can speak for all my colleagues, all nine of us are ready to fight and defend and to speak on your emotions, your feelings, your behalf, and your opinions, and that we will hold each other accountable to make sure that is continued, so you have a safe learning environment, but more importantly, a peaceful and healthy and academic rigorous environment. You are here to learn, and that's your primary part. And the fact that we have to consider this part and step away from our mission of teaching you to be great intellectual minds is frustrating for us, but that's our primary goal, is to create a space so you can be the intellectual curious minds that you are, you can develop to who you be. So we are here to stand with you, we hear you, and we're continuing to advocate with you, beside you and behind you as you lead this fight.
All right, Vice Chair Nabahon Kinney?
No, I was saying, don't forget the motion.
I know, what did that? I can, all right, now we may have a motion for the contract, please? Motion to approve. Motion approved by Member Maze.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Nabahon Kinney, all in favor. Raise your hand. Any opposed? All right, thank you. It passes unanimously, eight to zero. Now we'll move on to a board report. Our student board members have reports to give. We'll start with our junior board member, and then...
Hmm? It was 100 percent.
We'll start with a school board member, when?
Okay, hello to all the remaining members of the audience. So this week, we're launching something new. So to get both me and Ava more involved in our meetings during board reports, we are going to make the time to give you a bi-weekly update, both having to do with the core tenets of Student Spotlight, and then also the additional questions, comments, concerns, or recommendations that we have to the board. So I'm very excited about this, this is the first week that we're doing this, so bear with me, this got done at three o'clock today. So yeah, so for this week's core tenet, we've chosen identifying and eliminating inequalities. So this week, in terms of collecting input and data from our community, not just from students, but from teachers, from community partners, I think that we recognize that there are disparities in resources for post-secondary planning for students. And I think in the grand scheme of things, that this does shape student motivation and engagement, especially as we sit in this piece of the fall semester, we're understanding and we see the absence of gear up, and I think that the student-to-counsel ratio visually can be very poor. And then I think lastly, we've also recognized that how much our schools are really implementing these different scalable practices, such as family engagement events, college visits, college is coming to us if they can't afford to get us to their campus, and workshops to help kind of close these gaps. So we're asking for your support in those areas. And this week's Student Spotlight, I'm gonna turn it over to Ava. It goes to Martin Luther King High School's Best Buddies Club. Best Buddies is a 300-chapter organization with the initiative of forming friendships with people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And I think this chapter organization, from what I've observed, has worked really, really hard to make a lasting impact on their students. They promote the ideas of inclusions and acceptances, which I think is, also goes along with our core tenets. And at M O K, the Best Buddies Club has participated in things like friendship walks, dances, and creating and selling holiday bags. Ava, would you like to touch on that?
I recently joined Best Buddies this year, but I have known the members of Best Buddies for a while, ever since my freshman year. Shout out to Nethia specifically, that's just one of my little shout-outs. She is currently the treasure, I believe, of Best Buddies, and she's been doing a great job this year, so shout out to her. But yeah, Best Buddies, I've always, actually, the teacher who, or the sponsor for Best Buddies is my royal time teacher, which is pretty much my advisory. She's been with me ever since seventh grade. She's great, she also has a buddy of her own, and her and her buddy have always been very close. I know she has a little bracelet of her buddy, that her buddy made for her with her buddy's initials, so I think that is really, really adorable. But yeah, Best Buddies at M O K has definitely been such an important thing. At M O K, basically, M O K is very driven based on its diversity and inclusion, so I think Best Buddies really, really highlights those two attributes. And you know, as Hannah said, we've had our friendship walks, we had our dances, and we always make sure to do our fundraiser with the holiday bags, whether it's Valentine's Day or it is Christmas time, I can always look forward to, you know, giving out holiday bags or just getting one for friends, so that's always great. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ava. And then also, we're opening up different suggestions for Student Spotlight, so if you guys know anybody, any student organization, club, that should be highlighted, we're working on that right now towards our Instagram. And then lastly, our closing and student recommendations, these reports are only a page long, guys, so they won't take a whole ton of time, but our recommendations to the board are to continue supporting students navigate barriers, eliminate those barriers to student success, and to get more individuals in our school to help with financial aid, scholarship applications, filling out FAFSA's, and as well as those early supports in academic readiness, such as tutoring, exam prep, helping to early exposure to different college and career paths. We also suggest that possibly Metro Nashville Public Schools to start documenting these like target outreach in, that have improved college visits, career exposure, and scholarship and acceptances for students. That's all we have for today, and I hope you guys enjoyed.
Thank you very much for that report, that's greatly appreciated. Only announcement that I have is that our next school board meeting will be October 28th. We will not have a school board meeting on October 14th due to fall break, so our next school board meeting will be on October 28th. Be no further business, this meeting's adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.